Okay.
All right.
Good evening, welcome to April seventh, twenty twenty five. This is the sixth meeting of the year. Uh, Alyssa, can you give me the uh, proclamations?
In compliance with chapter two thirty one of Public Law nineteen seventy five, notice of this meeting to be held at the College Justice Building, sixty one Main Street, South River, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January fifth, twenty twenty five, posted on the Municipal Building Bulletin Board, the Borough Website, and the front door of the College Justice Building at sixty one Main Street, South River.
Local.
Mayor Gindi.
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Here.
Councilman DeSantis.
Here.
Councilman DeZemian.
Here.
Councilman Janikopoulos.
Here.
Councilman Gertenski.
Here.
Council President Seula.
Here.
Stand first with the flag.
The flag will be lifted. The flag is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. We may be seated. Today we have one proclamation and one presentation. I'm going to do the proclamation first and then we're gonna have the uh, let inspection presented by.
Kenny.
Kenny. Proclamation, uh, National Public Safety Communicators Week, April thirteenth to nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Whereas emergencies can can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians are critical to the protection of life, preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, emergency medical technicians are dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who who telephoned the South River Police Department's Emergency Communications Center. And whereas public safety communicators uh are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link to our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the South River Police Department have contributed substantially in the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, professionalism during the performance of their job in the last past year. Now therefore, I, Peter Gindi, the mayor, along with the members of the council of the Borough of South River, do hereby proclaim April thirteenth through April nineteen twenty twenty five to be National Public Safety Tele- Telecommunicators Week in South River in the honor of men and women who diligently and professionally keep our community and citizens safe. Given under the hand and the seal of the Borough of South River, New Jersey, of the seventh day of April twenty twenty five. I congratulate each and every one of those dispatchers that do what they do every single day. Kenny, would you like to come up?
Sure. Thank you. Hey, everyone. My name is Ken Aitman. I'm with uh, Lou Environmental Company. I'm here to present uh, regarding the New Jersey Let's Certification Law. Uh, this law was put in place in July twenty second of two thousand and twenty twenty, twenty twenty two. At that time, the law stated that all municipalities had two years to have a program established and start doing inspections. Uh, it was targeting the one and two unit rentals in throughout the state. Recently, about six months ago, they extended the law, so now everybody has till July twenty second, twenty twenty five. My company, Lou Environmental Company, Lou Environmental created a program, and we are now working with over a hundred municipalities throughout the state. We are the only recognized company out there that is now uh, our program is coordinated and is uh, in conjunction with DCA. So everything uh, can be uploaded right to the DCA program. And we charge nothing to the municipality whatsoever. We're working, we're looking to uh, be a strategic partner with you guys. And basically, we would do all the billing, education, inspections, and it's all done directly to the owners of the rental units. We will collect the state fee on the municipality's behalf and submit that to the state. As well, if you guys decide you wanna add a a municipality fee, we will collect that and remit that to you guys at the end of the month every on a monthly basis. Again, like I said, we are working with over a hundred municipalities through the state. We basically handle everything for you, soup to nuts, and no charge to the municipality. The only fee that you might incur is if um, you do, if your rental registration program, you have one, I'm not sure if you do, but if you don't have one in place right now. What we typically do is we'll take the tax records and site windows, and again, it's like water bills, things like that to find out, try to get some information that way. We also have other databases where we're able to scrape some information to get these records. But if we have no like emails or phone numbers or anything like that, we uh, charge a dollar ten for letters that will get mailed out to the uh, owners. That's the only fee that you would uh, occur if that's needed. So, but again, like I said, over a hundred municipalities, we're working with DCA, we're the only recognized company that's, you know, and is a whole online portal that you guys will have twenty four seven access to. And you're able to see everybody who's uh, currently uh, signed up to have the inspections done, who's completed them, who's failed, who's passed. All this search will upload on this site that again, you have all access to, and you're able to download all information. So you guys have it at at any time that you may wish. So. Any questions or anything? Art, can you give your information and see how we can move on this?
We have all the information. The only question you may want to bring, wanted to charge to the property owner.
Okay, yeah, so for you guys are considered as visual zone, a visual zone. There's two areas in the state. Some, depending on where you are, you'd have to do a visual inspection or a dust wipe inspection. You guys are visual. The cost that we do across the state is two hundred and fifty dollars that we'll be charging to the owners for the visual inspection. If they were to fail the inspection, they have to do some remediation, and then they have to do that clearance inspection, which is the two ninety five, which includes visual and the dust wipes. It's all one price, two ninety five for that as well. So it's two fifty for the visual inspection that we'll be charging to the owners, plus the twenty dollar state fee that gets sent to the state. And then if you guys decide you wanna add any municipality fee, we'll collect that as well.
And I'm assuming this is directly to the, not to the insurance, but to the homeowners themselves. So homeowners insurance wants to get involved. Let's say something with traffic, with lead, with Google, something like that, basically.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't, yeah, in terms of that, I mean, that's all of the, yeah, that's their, that's their deal. Again, there's still be no money transactions between the homeowners and you guys in terms of this program. We will do all direct billing to the homeowners ourselves. The only thing that we, again, if you guys decide to add a municipal fee, municipal fee, we'll collect that on your behalf and remit it to you monthly.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it.
All right, great, thank you.
We're gonna go to a session, uh, agenda session, um. We have one for second reading, we have three for uh, first reading. Uh, Andrew, can you uh, chime in on the twenty twenty five dash nine?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Uh, twenty twenty five dash oh nine, that is an amendment to your zoning ordinance. It removes a section concerning preexistent uses that has been preempted by the municipal land use law.
Um, I think you should pick up on the handicap, which is self-explanatory, twenty twenty five, ten. That's on the first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, was that for me? Uh, twenty twenty five, ten, it's just a handicap parking ordinance for Catherine Street.
Joe, can you uh, chime in on twenty twenty five, uh, parts of fees, parts of recreational fees?
Every year, the Recreation Board and Recreation Department review their fees, so this was their recommendation. There is a change from what was presented. Uh, on Q five, they referenced J one, it should reference Q one, so that's in your package right now for a change. And then on their R, athletic field use, uh, section four that you have now, it wasn't there, but it should be there, uh, waiving the fees for for recreation fees and so forth. So that was there in the prior ones, but this is recommended by the Recreation Board, uh, through the Recreation Department. You guys are at that point.
All right, thank you. Art, can you chime in on twenty twenty five?
Yeah, we're ha- we're having a slight problem with uh, people parking in the Office on Aging Parking Lot, not getting rural business, and even though it's posted, there was never an ordinance in place like we did with forty eight Washington to make it rural business only and give the authorities whatever they have to do for someone parking there illegally.
Okay.
So that's what this is.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna start off with the introduction of the twenty twenty five municipal budget, which is twenty twenty five, one, two, three. Resolution accepting the Borough of South River Municipal Budget for the fiscal year of twenty twenty five. Alyssa?
Resolution twenty twenty five, one, twenty three, municipal budget notice. Municipal budget of the Borough of South River County Middlesex for the fiscal year twenty twenty five. Be a result of the following statements of revenues and appropriation shall constitute the municipal budget for the year twenty twenty five. Be a further result that said budget be published in the Home News Tribune in the issue of April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. The governing body of the Borough of South River does hereby approve the following as the budget for the year twenty twenty five. Notice is hereby given that the budget and tax resolution was approved by the council members of the Borough of South River County Middlesex on April seventh, twenty twenty five. A hearing on the budget and tax resolution will be held at the Public Safety Building on May fifth, twenty twenty five, at seven o'clock P M, at which time it plays objections to said budget and tax resolution of the year twenty twenty five may be presented by taxpayers or other interested persons.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, seconded by Council President Seula.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Council President Seula?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Alyssa, uh, second reading for twenty twenty five dash nine.
Ordinance twenty twenty five dash nine, ordinance of the Borough of South River County Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending chapter three fifty of the Borough Code of the Borough of South River entitled zoning.
Make a motion with the full reading.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seula, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like to open this to the public for thirty five minutes, state your name and your address. First of all. This is for the ordinance. I'll let you know when you come back. Uh, second reading, uh, second call?
Make a motion to close public?
Second. Motion by Council President Seula, seconded by Councilman DeZemian.
All in favor?
Aye.
Counsel discussion? Do I have a motion? Motion? Motion by Councilman Krasinski?
Second.
Second by Councilman DeZemian.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Council President Seula?
Yes.
All right, Alyssa, we're gonna go to first reading, uh, twenty twenty five dash ten.
Ordinance twenty twenty five dash ten, in ordinance to amend the code of the Borough of South River, chapter one ninety three, entitled vehicles and traffic, by amending section one ninety three dash thirty one point one, schedule two A, handicap parking there.
I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty five dash ten on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M on May the fifth, twenty twenty five, by video conference via Zoom running council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building, sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seula, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Council President Seula?
Yes.
What's the twenty twenty five dash eleven?
Ordinance twenty twenty five eleven, in ordinance of the Borough of South River County Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend chapter one fifty five entitled fees.
Move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty five dash eleven on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M on May the fifth, twenty twenty five, by video conference via Zoom, or the uh, council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building, sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey. Second.
Motion by Council President Seula, seconded by Councilman DeZemian.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Council President Seula?
Yes.
What's the twenty twenty five dash twelve?
Ordinance twenty twenty five dash twelve, in ordinance of the Borough of South River County Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend chapter one ninety three entitled vehicles and traffic.
Move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty five dash twelve on its first reading by title only, and clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M on May the fifth, twenty twenty five, by video conference via Zoom, or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building, sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey. Second.
Motion by Council President Seula, seconded by Councilman DeZemian.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Council President Seula?
Yes.
Thank you. We're gonna go into reports. Uh, Bruce?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four road program is moving along, and uh, as soon as we get a date for the contractor for the milling and overlay, we'll hand out new notices. The twenty twenty three local transportation projects grant, we're submitting that, when it's all done, we're mailing that out to the DOT tomorrow morning. And then once they give us approval, we'll be able to put that out to the, the uh, the twenty twenty five local aid program. Uh, we gave you a proposal for that, and when you're ready, you can authorize us to move with that. Substation, everything is done there. The report is done except for the one fellow who does the final approval, hasn't done that yet. I called him again today. Once he does, we can close that out. And I've been talking to Mr. Landenski and Mr. Zanga about redoing that that contract, you know, putting it back out to do whatever is needed. And the stormwater grants, uh, we've given you a proposal for that. I don't think you're gonna be able to authorize it in time, but we're gonna move on that show no matter what, just so you get it done.
Make a, make a, make a resolution.
Yeah, we just have to move it along so you're not behind the date that you have to get it. So I'll take care of that. And that's it? Any questions?
Councilors.
I'll answer any questions.
Joe?
Thank you.
Uh, three resolutions I need to end. The first one is the resolution approving the temporary budget. This is required until we actually adopt the budget on May fifth. And you have a resolution for the shared service agreement uh, with the court administrator with Charles Milltown. Uh, that's from four one, twenty five, three thirty one, twenty six. And then the last one, you have a resolution uh, for a spring recreation place.
That's it. Counsel, do you have anything for Joe?
Page.
Yes. Uh, the spring, uh, hydrant flushing starts April twenty first, and it runs to May eighth. The information is in the Borough Calendar. We'll be sending it out on Nixel prior to every week. It's on the uh, Borough Website, Facebook page. So there's enough information out there for everybody. Uh, Friday, the eighteenth, uh, April will be closed. There'll be no bulk pickup. And finally, after five years, we have gotten our roll-off truck. So.
Counsel, anything for Age?
Uh, mayor, I do have one thing. Age, I know that you guys put a post out about the new county recycling contract, and basically the instruction to the residents was to keep doing what you're doing, same cans you use currently, same nights and all that, and that we'd expect to get an answer late March or early April. Has, have we gotten anything back from the county ever guarding that chain?
No, we have heard nothing yet, so I guess they're just waiting from either the company or the towns are holding it up, wanting it to. But we have not heard a word, and once we do, we'll put the message out there for everybody. Then they're gonna start the, you know, dropping off the cans, picking up the, the schedule. The schedule's gonna stay the same.
Okay, so status quo still?
Yep, everybody's still using the same cans you're using now. We put the message out last week, I think it was. So just keep doing what you're doing. And if they miss you, you can go bring it down on Saturdays from eight to twelve at the uh, E P W.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you, Age. Fire chief?
Thank you. Everyone from all units are in service. Uh, you will see tonight, resolution one forty two, and that's gonna be asking for approval for submission to the grant application for Firehouse Sub, which is a public safety foundation grant program. We are going for a grant for possibly uh, getting new fire gear for our members. We're looking at at least six plus sets. So that's already been submitted. It's something to do every quarter, so it's something we need to move forward on. Thank you.
Counsel, anything for uh, Art? Alyssa? Sorry. Andrew?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Alyssa?
Nope, nothing.
Art?
Hey, mayor, just have a couple of things. Um, the water may replacement project, we're in the environmental study part of it. The company has their engineers out, uh, looking at the test pits that they took, took in town and doing some surveying work. We also were notified today that we received a seventy five thousand dollar grant from the DCA towards the pickleball that we want, the courts that we want to install apart of park. That's it. And the other thing would be, um, one twenty nine and resolutions. That's a uh, inter municipality agreement, a shared service, East Brunswick, uh, actors. Um, we've done all our work with the well, the treatment plant, East Brunswick, we have come to an agreement to reduce the amount of water that they guarantee us every day from a fifty to six fifty, which will be a substantial savings over a twelve month period to the borough.
Thanks. Anything for Art? I'll look into the council, uh, Chair Krasinski.
Thank you, mayor. First on the Office on Aging, if you have not updated your membership, uh, or their database and everything, do you have to apply again, uh, just as you did initially? Let's see. That was at the close of last month, March thirty first. And from this point on, you really have to fill out a full application again. This month is April sixteenth. It's National Healthcare. You can set up an appointment with uh, the Office on Aging to explain uh, the power of eternity and healthcare proxy and everything too for a living well, however it happens. Please call and uh, set up an appointment if you're interested in that. The office will be closed on April eighteenth, which is Good Friday. And uh, also, they also want appointments too for the New Jersey Property Tax Credit Program presentation. This is an R S V period required. It's gonna be Thursday, May eighth, at eleven P M, and that's on the Office on Aging. But you do have to call to make an appointment to the F B incident. Also, the residential paper shred is scheduled for at Nine Island Way for Saturday, June twenty eighth. And also, the D M P is also gonna offer, um, your real IDs again at the Office on Aging. You have to call to schedule an appointment, and it's gonna be limited availability, and it's going to be on, uh, let's see what it is. It's in June.
Twenty fifth. June twenty fifth. Okay, that's all I have, mayor. Thank you. All right, thank you. Councilwoman Ballas, please?
I just have a couple of things from Cultural Arts. They're going to be hosting a walking tour called the Cordova elopement scandal. Wait to hear this. Brian Armstrong is gonna be running it. As you know, he's done with cemetery walking tours. It's free. Everybody enjoys it. It will be starting at the old library or the old memorial building on Saturday, April twenty sixth, at one o'clock. He will have the book available that he also wrote. During the tour, he will show you the shocking details of the scandal you don't wanna miss. And the background of this scandal is. I didn't know we, this town was so interesting. Heck of a day. That in nineteen oh four, a Methodist Episcopal Reverend J. Frank Cordova and a twenty five year old choir girl, Julia Brown, popular at that time, she was the belle of South River, eloped in nineteen oh four. Now, the reverend was married. Uh, the tour will include the complex at the church where he he served, uh, the former home of the Brown family and the South River Museum and Cemetery. He will also have the book available to buy and to sign. So again, that's Saturday, April twenty sixth, at one o'clock. It'll be interesting. We're also getting underway. We're preparing for the Memorial Day Parade Monday, March twenty sixth. If any group would like to march, you must contact the Cultural Arts Commission at culturalarts@southrivernewjersey.org. And last, I'd like to thank the South River Historical Preservation Society. They sponsored a South River Elementary School Women's History Event at the end of March. They, which they included me. They had five women that made history in South River. We all got a little book arc. They handed it out to the elementary school kids, and uh, I was honored to be included. So thank them all.
Councilman DeZemian, um, being on the Public Safety Committee, I would think of first responders, EMS, and police, and especially the fire department. I happened to be close, uh, the other day, Saturday, when a fire, uh, call went out on Whitehead and got to be there and witness all of them showing up promptly and doing a very professional job. There was a fire that was way back, um, off Whitehead Avenue, and they had to lay down eight hundred feet of the big fire hose from the nearest fire hydrant to block the street to get the the public that's stopping to watch, to take pictures, to get them to continue on while the the uh, fire hose is currently being put down. The fire departments are showing up, Sarah Bolz, East Brunswick. And for them to get there and to be putting that fire out very quickly is pretty impressive, as a volunteer, um, fire department. And they got the fire out quickly before it spread and became a danger, very dangerous situation. So thank you to them, and that's all I have, mayor.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes, from the Board of Education, um, more several high school students attended the F B L A competition in Atlantic City. That's the Future Business Leaders of America. Uh, eleventh graders Andrew Yaniao, Carter McDonald, and Margarita Economova took fourth place as a team, so that's kudos to them for their accomplishments. And the next Board of Education meeting is Monday, April twenty eighth, at seven P M in the high school auditorium. From the Recreation Advisory Board update, uh, registration for T-ball is still open. There's a fundamental instructional program mixed for boys and girls ages four through six, and they're gonna start soon here in mid-April. Uh, the EdCon is this Saturday, April twelfth, at Saint Mark's Coptic School in the backfield between Morningside and Cam Avenue. It'll be starting at eleven A M for grades one through five, and then at eleven thirty A M for kindergarten and younger. It is free admission, and it is B U I O B. Bring your own basket. So just keep that in mind. Uh, registration is open for summer rec, and this is for residents currently in first through seventh grade, entering second through eighth grade. This runs July seventh through August seventh, and you can visit the Borough Website for more details and to register at www.southerrengie.org. Click Departments, then Parks and Recreation, and you will see a link to enroll. And if any issues, you can call the office at seven three two, two five four, four four one two. The next recreation and meeting is actually tomorrow night, April eighth, at seven P M, and we meet at fifty five Reed Street, and residents are welcome and encouraged to attend.
Councilman DeZemian, please.
Um, I attended a environmental shagery committee meeting, uh, this past Thursday, and I just wanted everyone to know that they are planning an event at Daley's Pond. It's April twenty sixth, which is a Saturday. It's an Arbor Day event. They wanna invite everyone to it. Uh, there's a flyer on the website posted about it. Kid, you know, families, bring your kids out there. They'll teach you about, you know, trees and how to, you know, what kind of trees belong in our area and, you know, environmental, I guess, information. And that's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
Council President Seula?
Thank you. Um, real quick, the E D C is gonna have their spring gathering for our businesses in town. They had one back in December, and we had people there from the state who offered them different grants and small business loans. So they're gonna have that again coming up in May. So invitations went out to all the small businesses in town to participate. That's all I have.
What's the date of it?
Um, maybe. First of all, yes.
All right, we'll hold off my comments till later. I will be opening it up to the public. You get five minutes to speak. Uh, please state your name, your address. Andrew, before we proceed. Back in September, the mayor and council approved an agreement with D.
Like in September, the county council approved an agreement with Be Reels Inc. for internet advertising for businesses in town. At the time, it seemed like it was going to be for the boroughs. It turns out the borough's paying for free internet advertising for businesses in town. Thing I was curious about is that the money came from three separate accounts, and there are numbered accounts, so you can't really tell what they are. So I was here to ask, where did this money come from? So the first account, we transferred three thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents from account four dash oh one dash two zero dash one one zero dash two eleven. And then one thousand three hundred eighty-seven and fifty cents from four dash zero two dash fifty-five dash five oh two dash two oh two. And two thousand eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents from four. Account four, that's zero three dash fifty-five dash five oh two, there's two oh two. So I'm just curious, where those three accounts go?
There you are. First one is general administration, so the contract was split fifty percent current fund, thirty percent electric fund, twenty percent water fund. So four oh one is the general admin portion, four oh two is water operating portion, and four oh three is the electric operating portion. So in total, that contract, it should have been fifty percent to general admin, thirty percent to the four oh three, twenty percent, I think, to four oh two, which is water. I don't have it in front of me, but I think that's what we did back then.
Right, so I'm just, you know, I guess my concern is that almost seven thousand dollars paid this company and collect businesses have free internet advertising. I guess I would assume that it's going to help the downtown. Seven thousand dollars can go a long way, helping the downtown look better. I don't know if anybody knows, there are no holiday decorations on Washington Street or the municipal property. We have banners downtown, but there's no banners in the municipal park. No holiday decorations either. Come over the bridge, there's no welcome to South Riverside. So maybe the seven thousand dollars could have been used better and make the downtown look better, so everybody when they come downtown, they have a better experience. And then just giving it to this company to offer free internet advertising for businesses. So I would kind of hope that in the future, you might adjust the Economic Development Commission, the members there could vote on whether this is a good idea or not. And then maybe your consensus on whether to spend seven thousand dollars on free internet advertising for businesses is better spent on some beautification of the borough's properties downtown, which might inspire other businesses to beautify their businesses. That's what I was concerned about. Thank you for the answer.
Thank you, Ellen. Is there anybody else from the public?
Sorry, I can't break them off. That's all right. In reference to, what's your name? Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Chris Berrio, I live at one fifteen, one fifteen, excuse me, one oh seven Main Street. One oh seven Main Street. Been there for fifteen years. We do, we are a tenant. We don't want to be doing, we are a tenant there. This is regarding some rail parking issues that we were trying to address a number of years back. We've got issues with, there's obviously the church across the street which runs to several other churches. And probably four nights a week, when we get home from work there, it's nowhere to park. I mean, literally, if you want to park, we are blocking here in the municipal lot all along the street. There's nothing to park at. And there's been, I have spoken to people at the church once before, and you've got this other church that's right next door that's got a large parking lot, and it's never occupied except for Sundays. You know, so I don't understand why they can't speak to them, even say about maybe one of them, that they could use that lot, or at least direct the people that are coming there to maybe go to the municipal lot. This is, they haven't even got a ticket that I got in front of my, in front of my own place because of the fact that the only parking was in front of my driveway and back of my car, a little back behind it. So I came out in the morning to find a ticket. It is, there's a house, I don't know if you all remember the house fire that was right there. A number of years ago, it was a multifamily house that burned down and they rebuilt it. And everybody that's there, one of them is at a construction company, and he stopped four vehicles. And so they're taking a good portion of the parking also. Is there any way that, there could be some sort of permit parking for some of this section here? Because when you guys bring recycling situation in, where they come by and picking up these cans, it's like a wild, wild west there as far as parking. And I don't know how these guys are going to pick up these cans, because there's no, there's no lines because it's obviously not, you know, parking down in front of the businesses and so forth. So everybody kind of parks where they are, and a lot of these people that are there don't care. They just park wherever they want. And, you know, the one company that does construction, you know, there's a lot of parking a little further up, but they choose to park their vehicles right there in front of the houses. And that's, that's what a problem. I mean, as I said, we've been there fifteen years, and I know that my son was in Little League, you know, and, you know, in age, and we, we've been there a while, and we're just, it would like to see just something moving better about this because of the fact that it's really rotten to come home and you can't park, and you park in front of your own house.
I will look into it. I know it's a county road, it's not as easy as having hard inner streets to be permitted parking. So let me, let me work on this. If you could, could you give me your information later?
Hi, I'm Kim Close, it's Tida forty-five, David Street. I'm here to, I apologize to my neighbors, I was under the impression that today there would be discussion of house school area traffic. So I'm happy to start the conversation. I grew up in town, and I moved back, I left after high school to go to school and work around. And I came back about sixteen and a half years ago. And ever since then, we've had problems with school traffic in our neighborhood. After fifteen, we stopped counting, excuse me, my husband and I, Mike, are both here speaking on the side of the school. Our cars were hit on the street, and even, I'm sorry. After fifteen, we stopped counting how many times our cars were hit on the street and in our own driveway, and were forced to stop contacting police and insurance companies due to rising premiums. During this time, officers have stopped at a house proposing traffic adjustments to address the problem, but nothing has ever changed. About two years ago, I contacted one of the officers downtown, identified as a community policing officer, and requested increased, increased patrols during drop-off and dismissal times. I was told to expect traffic and craziness. Unfortunately, the supervisor is never available to speak when I call. Several years ago, we welcomed a new school into South River imposing similar problems the new Coptic Christian School has done little to similarly, refusing to utilize the attached parking lot on property or hiring crossing guards. Staff and students drive into town and disregard our neighborhood completely. Finally, I'm at my most recent issue. Several weeks ago, I was driving home from visiting a family, excuse me, and was forced to stop on David Street because there was a woman standing in the middle of the road with her phone. She yelled that I didn't yield to a crosswalk and stop visible. Afterwards, or change, excuse me, I drove home and quickly returned with my husband to address matters with school officials. Since this is par for the course of living in the school area, I just forgot about it and decided to avoid that area when driving. A couple of weeks later, excuse me, I'm having a, my blood pressure is high, excuse me. Couple of weeks later, I received, excuse me, would you finish reading this?
Absolutely. Michael Tida forty-five, David Street. A couple of weeks later, I received advertising letters from attorneys regarding tickets. I contacted the courthouse to discover two tickets were issued to me as a result of the above-mentioned incident. I never received notification from the borough, from the borough. While the tickets are pending, a court date might find this experience insulting. I quietly suffered the consequences of living amidst a problem no one cares to address. The new school has a new four-way stop sign while residents who tolerate daily inconvenience at least are disregarded by officials designated to police the community. Adding insult to injury, the police who refuse to patrol appropriately issue potentially damaging infractions to residents, while the complainant who created the situation likely drives out of town to arrive home. I'm truly at a loss. This problem has cost us thousands of dollars and threatens to cost thousands more. I decided reaching out would be a good idea, because even if you're unable to assist in your role as mayor, your knowledge of municipal proceedings far exceeds mine. Would it be appropriate to share the above information at the council meeting, at least for documentation and notification to the council? If so, okay, needless to say, I apologize.
I apologize. Excuse me.
No, it's okay. All right, so I know I've spoken to you previously. Tomorrow, I have to have a private meeting with superintendent. This is one of our biggest issues. Believe me when I tell you, I know how much it's bothering you, because the father's my parents, and we still live where my parents still live, but I'm in a transition place. And I've had so many times where my father and my mother, which my dad's ninety-two years old, calling me, saying, I can't get out of my life. And bleeding, the anger at me just as much as the anger. So I am going to follow up on this conversation. A pleasure.
Thank you, and excuse me.
Yeah, that's all right. Are you okay?
Yeah, I am, okay.
Anyone else from the public this week?
Good evening. I'm Jasmine Green from one oh nine Main Street. So similar to my neighbor, Mr. Gredo, we're having a crazy issue with parking. I received a ticket as well last month, but I was parked by the meters. Unfortunately, I've had two back surgeries, which resulted in me using ambulatory devices for a while. Now, I don't walk with them, but I do struggle to carry things long distances. And with churches having long services, one night I was up until eleven o'clock in the rain trying to wait for a parking spot to open, ended up leaving my car at a meter on, at eighty. You know, eighty Main Street, I live at one o'clock. I would love to park in front of my house. Instead, I got a fifty-dollar ticket for parking from a meter. I understand that it's a county street, I actually am very familiar with the county, so I plan on reaching out to them as well. But the ordinance that I found relating to the alternate size, or not alternate, the alternate hour or certain hour provisions, it's from nineteen ninety-four, seems to be outdated, states from Water Street to Jackson Street, you shouldn't be able to park on either side of the street from two A M to six A M. I can give you the ordinance number if you want. It's nineteen twenty-four, nineteen ninety-four dash twenty-four. It says it was last amended at eight seventeen nineteen ninety-four. So my thing is, I got the ticket because I was parked at the meter overnight, not because I didn't pay during the meter hours. I realize that you guys have limitations on the streets, but again, as a resident, I don't want to have to park at the meter. I even paid the meter cop to park there. I would be willing to pay permit to park in front of my house, even on the same block. You know, instead of having to park further up down the street. It just, it's very inconvenient. Also, as far as the, the actual parking, I, I, like, I've just been looking up a lot of different ordinances. And I was able to find the, it's ordinance, part two, chapter one ninety-three, part one, and article two regarding the parking. And it says that if there's an excess of twenty percent of occupants on the street that aren't residents, that we could get parking, you know, restricted parking for our street. So I wanted to try to, like, push for that, like, so I will reach out to the county directly to see if that's an option. But at least allowing people to park at those meters, like, so we're not trying to abuse anything. We literally just want to be able to get to and from our house without being trapped. Like, yesterday, I couldn't even leave my house, I, my wife and I, one year anniversary, we couldn't leave the house this weekend. Because if we leave the house, we come back, we can't park anymore. And if we do, it's, we stand a chance of getting a ticket. And I've lived there for fourteen years, Chris and his wife lived there for fifteen years. It's just getting a little out of hand. I understand that people have to park, and it's not something you guys can control, but people are literally parking in front of my house and walking down to get their drive-thru. People are walking down to the stores in downtown areas, avoiding meters and leaving me, like I said, as a prisoner of my own home. So I definitely appreciate your time this evening.
I appreciate it. All right. Andrew, if you could look into those two ordinances, please. Anyone else from the public?
Please sit on that twenty-sixth, Gary Allen. I just kind of want to speak to what Kim was talking about as well, because my husband and I live across from the primary school, Mary West Street in Donna. I can't tell you how many times I can't leave my house, as you said, because someone has parked behind, behind my driveway. My parking lot, my driveway, is right next to our neighbor's driveway, so it's a big spot. So people think they can just pull in there, sometimes even like wrong, you know, they're supposed to be going this way, they're wrong way. They come at seven thirty in the morning, and I think those kids go in at like eight forty-five. And they just sit there, and no one, no one says anything, no one, like, I, they must think I'm crazy because I'm out there, you know, like screaming, my husband's coming out of the gym, he's going to kill you. Because I'm the problem, basically. It's really bad. These people just have no consideration at all. And I know you've spoken, my husband and I have talked before, and suggested that we, like, that we petition for permit parking. I don't think that's going to help, because it is illegal to park behind my driveway, and they do it anyway. So why, if it says there's a permit, why are they going to be like, oh, I don't have that permit, I'm not going to park here? Like, there has to be some kind of repercussion. I took a picture and I sent it to my husband the other day, there was someone parked literally at the bottom of the primary stairs for three hours. It's not, it's not parking the day, it's a complete yellow curb. It is in the smack dab at the end of the intersection. So you can't turn either way. They were there for three hours. They were not taken in, no one came, no one stopped, no one said anything, like, around that school, there are no rules. It, like, it is dangerous, like, and there are kids that do walk. I see parents that live down the street that are walking with their, and people just, they do whatever they want to do. It's like, they don't fly great, they don't park great, it's, it is really inhaleable. And I know that you said, you know, that you were going to speak to someone, but I think it really, like, if we just have to come here all the time and complain and complain and complain until something is done, then...
Not to cut you off, we hold no jurisdiction when it comes out to the Board of Education itself.
No, I understand that.
We hold jurisdiction over our own roads.
Right.
It's, it's an ongoing issue with the school system. And believe me when I tell you, it's an ongoing issue. The biggest problem is that at any given one time, the schools are in session, everybody's coming into school. You have three squad cars driving around, dealing with four actual buildings in the whole entire town. Whether it's the South River School, if it's the Coptic School, if it's down, you know, the Dell Arkham School. And the problem is that for us to call the police and have them come to deal with the parking is not as easy. We have to find a way to this office with the Board of Education, and this is one of the biggest reasons I'm having this meeting tomorrow. I just, I personally have a, like, I'm not going to lie to you. I hate when I have to, again, call for my dad saying, there's somebody in my car, like, physically, literally physically.
I parked in the driveway, yes, it's happened to us, too.
And call the police.
And we, we have, there've been, a lot of times, I have called the police because I literally had an emergency and I had to get out now. But otherwise, like, we don't do it, because it's, it's not, you know, it's not an emergency, it's not, you know, if you're not...
My advice to you is you call the cops, at least it's being noted every single time. And it's, it's a hassle, but at least, it's, it's a paddle. So now what happens is you've got a police officer, always driving down that road, packed up to at a time, just looking for it.
Well, thank you, I, I have had...
And you know what? I took pictures.
So do I.
Everybody's like...
And just, just for the record, a Board of Education meeting next one is April twenty eighth. So feel free to go there, too. But you're more than welcome to come to me anytime. Anyone else from the public? First call, second call.
Motion closed, public.
Second. Motion by Council President Seola, seconded by Councilwoman Dallas.
Call on favor.
Aye.
All right, we are going to go into consent resolutions. There are two consent resolutions that are to be added to this between month forty-eight and month forty-nine. Alissa?
Whereas Resolution twenty twenty-five authorizes the Borough Council to utilize consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of your routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Therefore, be it is hereby resolved, the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council and hold as if the same or individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions twenty twenty-five, one twenty-four to one twenty-five, one forty-nine. One twenty-four, resolution authorizing an emergency temporary municipal budget. One twenty-five, authorize a construction department permit refund. One twenty-six, authorizing requisition of funds for payment to the custodial of school monies. One twenty-seven, awarding contract to CME associates for professional services related to Vostowski Park. One twenty-eight, authorize the execution of a shared service agreement with the Borough of Milltown. One twenty-nine, authorize the execution of a shared service agreement with the Township of East Brunswick. One thirty, appointment of a part-time dispatcher. One thirty-one, appointment of a special law enforcement officer, class three. One thirty-two, support for suitability of cannabis business nurturing leaves LLC. One thirty-three, support for suitability of cannabis business, high-end cannabis corporation. One thirty-four, awarding a contract for the purchase of a lawnmower to John Gwier Supply LLC. One thirty-five, appointment of a crossing guard. One thirty-six, authorize the appointment of Jason Farina as firefighter for the South River Fire Department. One thirty-seven, twenty twenty-five springer creation employees. One thirty-eight, appointment of a laborer A for the sanitation department. One thirty-nine, resolution appointing council on aging member. One forty, appointment of meter readers. One forty-one, authorize certain utility refunds. One forty-two, approving submission of a grant application to Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation Grant. One forty-three, accept March tenth, twenty twenty-five regular session minutes. One forty-four, authorize the built-in claims list. One forty-five, resolution amending appointment of OEM members. One forty-six, appointment of Eric Lobella as summer help to the Department of Public Works. One forty-eight, resolution authorizing the Borough of South River to enter into municipal shared service of legal defense agreement. And one forty-nine, resolution authorizing South River Parks and Recreation Facilities use permit, South River Primary School PTA.
Motion to approve consent resolutions, second.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Dallas.
Councilwoman Dallas?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Zanian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Giacopolis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gertenski?
Yes.
Councilwoman President Seola?
Yes, with the extension from one thirty-six, one forty-two. And on one forty-four, twenty-four dash zero two eight eight six. Twenty-five dash zero zero eight one nine, zero zero five eight eight, zero zero five nine five, and zero zero seven one five.
Alright, we're gonna go into uh, governing body uh, comments, uh, Councilman DeSantis.
I have nothing to say there.
Alright, Councilman DeSantis?
Yes, I just have two quick things, um, our flag football season started yesterday. Proud to announce that the borough has a hundred and fifty-five children in the program, which is eighteen teams across five divisions. Uh, the concession stand is open every Sunday. They play from eleven AM until four thirty PM roughly, uh, and there's concession supports to Booster Club. Kind of, it wasn't nice this Sunday with the weather, but it's a nice day to get out. You see people, put your chair down and watch uh, watch the kids play. I also wanted to give a shout out to our cheer uh, competition teams. The eighteen U team took second place this weekend. And the fourteen U and both AU teams took first place at their competitions this past weekend, so, great job to the girls. That's all I have there.
Thank you. Councilwoman, uh, DeSantis?
This Saturday, April twelve, from ten AM to two PM, in the parish hall of Jeffrey Avenue, St. Theodore Paul Church. We'll be selling potato pancakes along with a, a lot of other um, food items that uh, and I don't know exactly which ones, but they're good ethic foods, so go out there. They do it each year, it's kind of the same setup. And the next free concert at the Imperial Music Center will be on Sunday, May fourth, at two o'clock. They just had one yesterday. Our meetings are, seem to be the day after hosting those concerts, so I'm announcing them out for the next one. But they're a lot of fun, they're at the Imperial Music Center, it's free concert. And um, it's a nice uh, nice afternoon. And that's all I have there.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dallas.
Okay, and yeah, first I'd like to thank the first responders, police department, but you know what? Shout out to those crossing guards. They're out there every day in all kinds of weather. Trying to keep your kids, oh, safe and secure and get them across the street. I watch them down from my, my house every morning, so I, I thank them. I, I have crossing guard family members that are going over there, but I appreciate them all. And for those who uh, celebrate, Happy Passover and Happy Easter. We don't have another meeting till then.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kraschinsky.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank all of our public service workers, uh, police, fire, especially our fire, our DPD guys for all the work that they do to protect us and save us. I'd like to thank all the people that have cameras and everything too, and reporting in and being vigilant as far as neighborhood watch and everything goes, because they had uh, a few people eyeing up uh, some of the high-end cars and everything too, and breaking into homes, uh, and a few other things. So our police are out there and they're trying to protect us as best as we can. But uh, the thing is too, they also need our cooperation too. So if you see something unusual, someone hanging around that doesn't belong there, please uh, you know, notify them, take note of it, uh, get a description or whatever, mark it down. If it's repetitive, make sure you call the police and let them go. Also the fact too, that uh, the South River Lions Club is having an Italian dinner on Wednesday, April thirtieth, from five thirty to seven thirty. It's fifteen dollars for person, for person, and it's at the South River BF Town Hall. That's all I have here, thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor, um, just a couple of things. Well, actually, one thing, um, the weather again, everybody is getting a lot nicer, hopefully, without this rain. But the kids are out, they're riding bicycles, they're on scooters, they're on the motorized scooters, and they do not stop at intersections. They just fly right through, so please, stay alert, uh, watch out for the kids. They have no idea on what traffic laws are. Uh, and again, just uh, Happy Easter to everybody and Happy Passover, and see you next month.
Thank you. Alright, so, social media. Social media is the biggest corruption you could ever hear. And the reason I say this is because everything you see or you hear is not exactly accurate. For example, we had rumors that go around that there was houses being broken into and people were actually in the houses. South River hasn't had yet an actual house breaking. They've had several cars trying to be broken into, you've had several houses trying to get into the houses, but they've never succeeded to actually physically get inside the house. The reason I'm telling you that, if they got into your house, it was not something new to me.
That, that happened about six months ago.
Oh, that's new to me. I hope you reported this.
I did.
But the reason I'm bringing this to your attention is this. The best deterrent, when I tell you the best deterrent, is to light up your house, lay it on that. Do whatever it takes to light up your house. The reason I'm saying this is because the one house that there was, the guy was trying to break into, didn't realize the guy had three big German Shepherd dogs. Never succeeded. The problem with that was when they ran away, now the whole entire neighborhood was sitting there figuring out where these kids went. And the reason I'm making a big deal about, because it was my neighbor's house. So what I'm saying is this, when it comes down to house break-ins, car break-ins, whatever may be, light up the house. You are the best deterrent before that person even gets to your house. Remember, you have three main, you have three squad cars at any given time driving around, controlling two point seven mile radius of the house, uh, of the town. So it's not easy to call, like, expect a cop to be there regardless. And believe me when I tell you, I have some interesting things in my driveway, and I think about it every single day. So please, put out candles, light up the house, put up lanterns. Do everything possible to prevent them physically from coming to your house. It's not easy, no it's not, no, I'm telling you, and I feel for you, because I didn't know if you had it written in your house. School parking, I know this was a topic that came up, uh, I am gonna be speaking to the superintendent tomorrow, hopefully we can find some type of resolution. I mean, I thought of something just now, so hopefully we could run with it. I wanna thank the DCA for the seventy-five thousand dollar uh, grant that we just received, pickable is coming to South River. Fine, it's gonna be at Varga Park. As you heard, the kids are out, the weather's getting great, please be vigilant when you're driving down these roads. Try to do the speed limit, if not, go slower, you never know when something's gonna pop up. And Happy Easter, and enjoy the, the. We are going to be going into executive session, we'll be allowing you to take any action afterwards, so you're more than welcome to sit here, and we're more than welcome to leave. Alissa?
Resolution twenty twenty-five one forty-seven, whereas section eight of chapter two thirty-one Public Law nineteen seventy-five permits the exclusion of the general public from a meeting of the governing body under certain circumstances. And whereas the mayor, council, and borough of South River are of the opinion such circumstances presently exist, but therefore be it is hereby resolved by the mayor and council of the borough of South River and the county of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, for the public be excluded upon the hereafter specific subject matter and that sub-subject matter to be discussed is as follows, litigation and property acquisition. Be it further resolved at such record of the above discussion we made public and confidentiality is no longer required. The Borough Council, the Borough of South River may or may not take formal action at the conclusion of the executive session.
Motion to go in the closed?
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Kraschinsky, second by Councilwoman Dallas.
Councilwoman Dallas?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Zanian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Giacopolis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gertenski?
Yes.
Councilwoman President Seola?
Yes.